So, we've been talking about deliverance from the fear of demons. We started with actually talking about fear itself. There are different things that cause us fear, why we are frightened. And then we gradually rode into the subject of fear of demons because we talked about fear of other things. And with the fear of demons, what we've seen so far is that it's because we don't really understand who we are. We don't understand the limitations that have been placed on the devil. And we give him too much credit. We think he is much bigger than he actually is. As a result, we don't ever actually engage him in any sort of combat, nor that we need to engage him in any combat. But what I mean is, it's like when somebody comes and threatens you, and you are just too frightened to even talk back at the person, and you just allow the person to just run roughshod all over you. Just because you don't know your power, you don't know your authority, you don't know your strengths, you don't know your position in Christ. And so you think your enemy is much stronger than you are, and you give him so much credit. And what we've seen is that when we do that, we don't do ourselves any favors at all. And we become unduly frightened of the devil. We saw that, we've started to see that actually Satan is not all that. That if we set aside all the different powers that God has given the believer, and we just look at the simple thing of a free will. The human free will is enough to resist the devil on many grounds. Yes, you won't win all your battles with him, but the free will alone limits substantially what he can do. It's the reason why the Bible is strong on the subject of disciplining your children. Disciplining your children is so important in ensuring that the devil doesn't get access to your children. Because your children may not be saved, they may not know Christ, or they may be too young to know Christ and to exercise authority in him. But if they are taught, you know, simple principles on how to live their lives, what to say no to, where not to go, what not to do, that alone can keep them, you know, can keep the devil at bay. And so it's possible for a child to go through their whole childhood without encountering the devil in any sort of big way, without actually experiencing any serious disasters because they've been taught principles that just kept the devil away. Whenever you think about the devil, think of him like bacteria. Think of him like, like, um, like the kind of bacteria that normally makes food go bad, you know? When the food is standing on the fire, boiling, no bacteria has any chance. It's as simple as that. Any bacteria that causes food to go off starts to work after the food has cooled. The food has to cool to a certain temperature for bacteria to thrive in it and to cause the food to go off. So, anything that causes heat beyond a certain level simply puts the bacteria off. The same way, anything that heats up your life, the spiritual temperature of your life to a certain level essentially pushes the devil away. And simple things like teaching your children some principles, of course, not just your children, but also applying those same principles to your life will protect you from a lot of the evil devices of the enemy. And I say these things because, you know, very often when people are talking about demons, they're talking about deliverance from demons, they think about possession, you know? But the devil, the vast majority of his work on earth does not involve possession. It's not like, you know, the devil can just go and possess everybody. Think about it this way. When Jesus cast out demons from that man, the demoniac of the gathering, the one that said, you know, "My name is Legend because there are many of us", ask yourself this simple question. What were so many demons doing in one person? When there were so many people in the city that they could have gone and possessed? They couldn't go and possess. It wasn't like they could pick and choose who to possess. They had to find somebody that was suitable to be possessed. The vast majority of time, all the devil can do to people is go and poke them, punch them. I'm just talking figuratively, I'm not saying literally. But poke them, punch them, frighten them, do something. But he can't possess them because God put limits upon the devil. And you literally have to open the door for him to literally come in and possess. So, when somebody is possessed, it shows that a lot of that person's defenses, the defenses that God put in place to protect that person, I'm not even talking about Christians, talking about any human being. The defenses that God gave this person against the devil have all been broken down. And in my experience, what I've seen is that when somebody is possessed like that, it's either because they've indulged in all sorts of reveries and things that just opened the door to the devil, or they've been offended, he's become very bitter, they have harbored bitterness for a long time, and the devil feeds on something like that. So, there are certain things that break down your natural defenses and make it easier for the devil to feel like he's got room, he's got a way with you. You know, there are certain lifestyles that can make it possible. But that's also offense. That's why Jesus will really warn people against becoming offended. You know, even John the Baptist, I don't know if you remember this, but John the Baptist had a very short ministry. Many people think it lasted about six months, and then he was arrested and kept in prison. And whilst he was in prison, imagine that your job was to announce the coming of the Messiah. You were busy doing your job, the Messiah was getting attention, and on one hand, John knew that he himself must diminish whilst Jesus, you know, grew greater in his, Jesus ministry grew. But when he got arrested, he didn't expect arresting, you know, being arrested and then being taken out of circulation completely. He didn't expect that outcome. So, when it happened, he was human, he was shaken by it. So, John sent his disciples to Jesus to say, "Are you he who is to come? Or shall we expect another?" That's a very crucial question. This was the man that announced Jesus's coming. This is the man that pointed to be people. "Behold, the Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world." His own disciples left him and went to Jesus on the basis that they had heard from John. Now, this John was asking Jesus, "Are you the one to come, or should we look for another?" When they asked Jesus that question, do you know how he responded? Now, many of us, if I had been asked that question, I would have said, "Oh, John, I'm really sorry about your situation. I'm really, really sorry. I didn't expect things to happen this way." But I can assure you that I am the one that God sent, I'm the Messiah. I'm not talking about me, but talking about if I was Jesus. And don't you worry, the ministry, the work of God will carry on. Just to reassure John, do you know what Jesus did? He didn't even answer the people. He carried on doing miracles, and then he turned around and told the people, "Go and tell John that the eyes, the blind have their eyes opened, the lame walk, the deaf in here, and blizzard is he who is not offended in me." That was the message Jesus sent to John's disciples, telling them to listen. When John started his ministry, and his ministry is, John himself quoted, you know, the book of Isaiah, the voice of one crying out in the wilderness, you know, "Make way for the Lord", etc., etc. When John quoted that passage, he talked about how the lame will walk and the blind will see. So, what did Jesus do? He just performed those miracles, and then sent the people, saying, "You've seen these miracles yourself. What do you think I am? Who do you think I am?" And then he said, "Blizzard is he who is not offended in me." Offenses are dangerous. When you become offended, you know, offense in the biblical sense is not just about, "I am angry with you that you done something", but it can be disappointment, deep disappointment. You can be so disappointed with someone that you are disgusted with that person. When you become offended, do you know what happens? You shut your door, your heart, not only to the person that you offended with, but you shut your heart also to God. It's the reason why Jesus spoke about forgiveness so many, many times. He spoke about forgiveness so often because forgiveness is the answer to offense. And the person is constantly offended. The answer is forgiveness. There's no other way. Okay. So, we are doing a quick revision. For those of you that have just joined, we're doing a quick revision. We have some technical issues today, so we started a bit late. We're doing some revision. Good. So, we know that Satan, yes, he is the prince of the power of this world, of the air, prince of this world, etc. But that should not be taken to mean that he can do whatever he wants. It's not like he has the power to do whatever he wants because he is prince. He is not prince in that sense because the Bible says that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the earth belongs to God. And because the earth belongs to the Lord, it doesn't belong to Satan. Whenever we talk about Satan being the prince of the power of the air or being the ruler of this world, we should always put in a caveat, there's a clause. It's not a case that Satan owns the earth and can do whatever he wants with it. No. It's rather the case that he rules in the hearts of men of disobedience, men and women of disobedience, people who have submitted themselves to him, he rules. And since those people are the majority, therefore he is the prince of the power of the world, of the air, of the ruler of the world. Those people had to submit themselves to him. He could not be ruler without their consent. And that we need to understand. Satan is limited in what he can do to you. So, it's therefore not helpful for you to blame him for everything that happens in your life. Or this thing happens, the devil, that thing happens, the devil. Some things happen in our lives, and we can tell that there is a demonic influence because of the way it happened. And when we sense that, we should exercise our authority in Jesus's name, and we will talk about authority at some point, if not today, in the next session. But there are times when really all it is is just nature taking its course. And when, because we live in the fallen world, things sometimes don't go according to plan. When that happens, what we need to do is look for solutions rather than just spiritualize everything. Because sometimes if you need a natural answer, and instead you just go and pray, fast and pray, and sometimes, sometimes you waste time. Pray, believe, trust in God, and then look for solutions. Okay. We explained that Satan doesn't have as much power as you might think. When he says, "All this power will I give thee", he did not have it in him to take all the power of the world and hand it to someone. If that were the case, if he could do that, can I assure you, the Antichrist would have manifested itself already. The Antichrist will be a representation, a representative, sorry, of the devil, the closest ally that he'd ever found. He will be the person who has been most willing to work with him throughout time. Throughout time, imagine the Hitlers and all the horrible guys that have come and gone. They are nothing compared to the Antichrist because the Antichrist will submit to him completely. And therefore Satan will have a represent, somebody that will be acting like him on earth. But he can't do that yet. That itself tells you that he's under limitation. We explained that Satan did not get any extra power after the fall. He did not get any extra power after the fall. What he uses is deception, tricks. We explained that Satan is easily defeated. Even Michael the archangel, when he fought with Satan, merely rebuked him. We also explained that at the end of time, Satan will be bound by just one angel. Just remember that anytime you are frightened of the devil, remember, one angel is enough. We explained that God protects his children. The Bible says, "The angel of the Lord comes all around those who fear him and delivers them. He delivers them." We explained that Satan literally sought permission to attack Job. He sought permission to tempt Peter. It means that God was protecting these people, and he wasn't at liberty to do whatever he wanted. And we saw that in the case of Peter, the words of his mouth ensnared him. Satan works through trickery, deception. One of his tactics is counterfeiting. He will pretend to be God himself. He will pretend to preach the truth. If he can get someone to cooperate with him, who is good at pretends, then that's the perfect situation for him. One of the things that people have said about Antichrist, and I have no reason to doubt it, is that he's not going to be like Hitler or Salini or one of those, you know, maniacs that you look at, but the whole world knew that these people were evil. You know, when Hitler was doing his thing, Stalin, everybody knew that these guys were evil. It's just that they didn't have power against them. Now, with Antichrist, it's not going to be like that. He's going to be a smooth operator. He's going to be somebody that's going to trick everybody into believing that he's cool and he has their good at heart, and then he will turn around. Because when you read Revelation, it talks about how they will worship him. They will worship him. They would think, "This guy, who is like this guy? We've never found a leader like this before." That would be Satan deceiving people. That is his, his topmost trick is to pretend to be somebody else. Sometimes he just lies blatantly. We said the devil likes to big himself up. He likes you to think that he's bigger than he actually is. You know, he likes to make you think he's big. So, we gave examples where somebody tried to cast out a demon, and the demon was going to go out anyway. But before he went out, it had to do some drama, it had to do something, throw the person down. Why? To gain attention, at least of the bystanders. So, even if he has to go out, he's not going, he's going to pretend that he didn't go out with a fight, when actually he couldn't fight. When Jesus said, "Go out", he didn't leave. He had no other choice but to leave. But he had to convince the people around that he was strong, that he could do something. That, yes, he went, but he didn't go without a fight. That's all it is. The principle here is this. When you are fighting the devil in your own life, whether it be in sickness, whether it be in some difficult situation at work, whether it be a problem to do your finances, whatever that you are fighting the devil, remember this. He will pretend to make the problem bigger. So, for a short period, the problem may seem to grow in size. This is what he did. You see, there is an example of the disciples trying to cast out a demon. This happened at the foot of the mountain of Transfiguration. Jesus took three of his disciples up there, and there he revealed himself to them. But when he came down, he met the nine down there, who had been approached by a man whose child had epilepsy, something along those lines. And this child, you know, was having epileptic fits. Now, the disciples tried to cast out the demon. They couldn't. Now, Jesus came, and he cast that demon out. But before it happened, the Bible says, "The child started fitting strongly and epilepsy", if you haven't seen it before. When you see it, it looks really frightening. And a lot of people are really frightened of epilepsy because it's so unusual. It looks like, "What's happening?" And you might think something much bigger is going on. That's what the devil did. He made sure he frightened everybody, and even the disciples. When they tried to cast the demon out, and instead of the demon departing quietly, he threw up a fit. They started doubting themselves. That's what happens. So, you're trying to pray for someone to get healed. Instead of the person getting better, the person starts getting worse. That is a challenge on your faith. And then suddenly, instead of pushing forward, backtrack. That's what happened. So, they couldn't cast that demon out. Jesus came, and he cast that demon out. But remember, even in Jesus's case, the demon tried to do exactly the same thing. But Jesus rebuked it and stood his ground and let the demon leave. So, when something happens in your life, and you pray, and the situation seems to get worse, don't conclude that your faith has failed. Don't conclude that God hasn't come through. The devil sometimes has to throw a fit before he leaves. And your job is to stand your ground. Another one of the devil's tricks is enticement. You know, he likes to entice people. This is what he did to Eve. We said guilt and condemnation is another big one, you know? So, people who walk about with feeling guilty about things that they've done in the past, and the devil uses that to condemn them. You see, sometimes it can be very effective too. Condemnation is such that the devil doesn't have to attack you anymore. You will do the attacking yourself. Because you feel guilty, you will not put yourself forward for promotion. You will not put yourself forward to be used by God because you'll think, "I'm not worthy." You will exclude yourself from every good thing. The devil doesn't have to attack you. You will do the attacking yourself. That's how powerful condemnation is. Guilt and condemnation, which is why Jesus forgave us. And the reason why we walk in condemnation, do you know why we don't understand what Christ did on the cross? Many people think that Christ just forgave us our sins once, and then he said, "Go and sin no more", like he told that woman who was caught in the act of adultery. Because he told the woman, "Neither do I condemn thee. Go and sin no more." Many people think the salvation is like that. But salvation is not like that. Jesus died to pay for your sins. It's different from Jesus, Jesus's authority on earth to forgive sins. He told the people in the synagogue, he said that you may know that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins. Right? Because he's God. So, he's God, he can forgive you. It's like, "You owe me money. I said, 'Okay, you don't have to pay a penny. I've forgiven you. I can do that. I don't need any act of salvation. If it's my money, I can do that.'" And Jesus on earth had the power to forgive sins. But salvation is different from Jesus's power to forgive sins. Sin has to be judged. You see, Jesus could tell the woman, "I don't condemn thee. I've forgiven you." But he had to say, "Go and sin no more", because if that woman went and sinned again, she would need another act of forgiveness, and she might not find Jesus to forgive her. That's the limitation of Jesus's ministry. Whilst he was on earth, he could only forgive you once, and then if you sinned against, you would need forgiveness again. When he died, he became the propitiation for sin. In other words, the payment for sin eternally. Therefore, Jesus's death took care of people who sinned in the Old Testament. The Bible explains that. He took care of people who sinned before even Jesus himself was born. His death went into the past. His death was in the present, and also took care of people who, like you and me, who would be born 2,000 years after he had died. That's how powerful Jesus's death is. So, Jesus's death takes care of sins past, present, and future, the sins you haven't committed yet have been forgiven. They've been paid for. All you need to do is confess them. They've been paid for. So, with that in mind, your salvation should embolden you to come boldly before the throne of grace. You know, to come before the throne of God and just to say, "Look, I'm a child. My children don't have to be perfect to continue to be my children. They, I may not be happy with them over something they've done, and they may also not be happy with me over something I've done. But it doesn't change our relationship, father, you know, son, father-daughter relationship. It remains. Likewise, the Bible says that, "To them that believed in him gave ye power to become sons of God", basically his authority. You have become a son or daughter of God, and therefore he is in a relationship with you. If you sin, it's a family issue. You are not, if you're sinning, it doesn't put you outside the family where you have to fight to get back in. If you sin, it's a family issue. He deals with you like a member of the family. Just like your children misbehave, you discipline them, but they never stop being your children. With this in mind, if the devil comes and points at something that you did in the past, you say, "I don't know what you're talking about. I'm still the child of my father. If there's anything I haven't confessed, I'll confess it to my father. Nothing to do with you. This is our family business. That's nothing to do with you." This is the confidence that we need, to stand boldly so that each morning when you wake up, you're a holy person. Not because your acts are pure, all your actions are perfect, but because you've learned to take upon yourself the identity that Jesus has given you as a member of his family. And you walk in this identity every single day. There will be days that you will forget, and when you forget, the devil will storm in. "Yeah, you see, you didn't do this. You didn't pay your tithe. You didn't..." Shut him out and say, "Hey, this is a family issue. This is between me and my father. He still loves me. This is between me and my father. I resolve it with him. Nothing to do with you." Push condemnation out of your life. The Bible says that, "Who shall condemn us? Who shall bring a charge against us?" Yeah, it is God that forgives. If your conscience condemns you, John writes, "God is better than your conscience." Condemnation is a powerful one, so I really, really wanted to hammer that one. Okay, we said, you know, we make ourselves susceptible to Satan's attacks in so many different ways. And today, we started to talk about that. Today, we will continue that topic. We said Satan feeds on your pride, your anger, discontentment, hatred, unforgiveness. We said it's a reason why the Bible tells us to be angry and not sin. You know, the Bible doesn't say, "Love and don't sin." It doesn't say, "Be happy and don't sin." But anger. There are certain types of emotions that cause us to lose our sobriety. We stop being sober. And we explained last week that sobriety is more than being free from alcohol. No, for other, from the influence of alcohol. Sobriety is about having that mental sharpness, having that ability to be alert to what's going on in your life, to what, the different ways in which you make yourself vulnerable. You can become intoxicated with anger. Did you know that? Like alcohol, you can become intoxicated with self-righteousness. You can become intoxicated with, you can feel fully justified. I don't know if you felt it before, but I've felt it before. When somebody's done something wrong, and you know they are wrong, and you know that you are right, you feel full, you're full of anger, full of yourself. You feel like you can just let go, and you will not feel any guilt because you're right. What you forget is that... What you forget is that when you get into that mood, you're also vulnerable. Because the Bible says the wrath of man does not work the righteousness of God. When you are flowing in your wrath, God is not there with you. That's basically what it's saying. When you are flowing in wrath, God is not there with you. It's you on your own and you are just open to the devil. That's what the Bible tells us. Do not let the sun go down on your wrath. Neither give place to the devil. Why would it tell you to not to give place to the devil? Is, that is a throwback to Cain. Cain got angry and God showed up. He said, hey, what has your countenance fallen? Beware, sin lies at the door. All sin is crouching at the door and to you shall be its desire. But you shall rule over it. Why? Because God could see he was in, he was angry and he was gradually aging towards crime. If we get angry, it doesn't matter that we are right and the other person is wrong. This is, I'm saying it to you as much as I'm saying it to myself. Because I know myself, sometimes some people do things and I feel really, really justified in letting them feel the full brunt, you know, the full extent of my anger. But you know what? I know that it's wrong. If I let go, I'm just opening the door to the enemy. Doesn't mean that the devil will come and possess you. Can possess you like that. There are so many things, it takes more than that for a person to be possessed. But he will feed off your anger and he will give you ideas. He will tell you, you see what a person did? You see? I mean, you're fully justified in doing this and or doing that. And he will stoke your anger until you end up doing something silly. Or you, more, more often than not, what we do is we don't, we don't act out physically, but we might say something that we regret. Or for others, you cut that person off. You don't talk to them anymore. And because you didn't actually do something physical to them, you feel like I didn't hurt them. I just, I just protecting myself, really. But sometimes it's not about protecting yourself. It's about cutting the person off and that's the person's punishment. Your punishment is that I cut you off. It is not always on God. Say, be sober, be vigilant, because your adversary, the devil walks about like a roaring lion, seeking whom he may devour. We explained, he has to find someone. He's not at liberty to just go and possess a person. He looks for a vulnerable person. Let's not give place to him. We said that insult, you know, leads to offence. You know, anger, hatred, unforgiveness. Being hurt by somebody, we talked about relationships, you know, sometimes in a relation, in a relationship, things happen. You know, God created Adam and Eve. And because they were beings made in his image. One of the things, one of the benefits of creating Adam and Eve was that he had somebody other than himself, other than himself to fellowship with. I know that people say that God created man to worship him or to fellowship with him, but you know what? That's not in the Bible. At least I haven't found it. If you find it, just let me know. I'd be more than glad to study that. But I haven't found that. For a long time, I used to think that was true, that God created man for fellowship or created man to worship him, etc. No. That's not understanding purpose. The reason why he created man was dominion. It stated clearly in Genesis chapter one. Let us make man and let them have dominion. That was the purpose. But the, if you like, fringe benefit of having a being like yourself, whose job is to dominate another territory on your behalf, is that you have a relationship. Like the king of or queen of England would have had, I would say king more because those days of the, um, the British Empire. The king would have had a relationship with the governor of the Gold Coast, with the governor of the Bahamas, with the governor of Nigeria, all these places. They were governors appointed by the British monarchy to rule over those places. And they would have had relationships with them. Those people would have come back to Britain at some point and had an audience and they would have been in a relationship. It's one of the benefits of having someone work with you, that you have a relationship with them. But it's not the reason why you appointed a person to be, to have a relationship with. No, you appointed them because you had work for them to do. Likewise, God created us and put us on earth because he had work for us to do. But because he made us in his image and he made us with the capacity to respond to him in a way that no one else, not angels, not the animals, no other being other than humans can respond to him the way we, we do. The benefit of having such people, have such, such beings around is that God could enjoy fellowship with us. But fellowship always comes at a price. If you make, if you've just made a friend, you've also opened up the possibility of being hurt by that friend. It just comes with the territory. Why? Because there are nobody is perfect. And somebody's going to tread on your toes at some point. Somebody's going to say something that's going, you have to open your heart and make your heart big. If you're going to be friends with somebody, you must accommodate their weaknesses. You must accommodate their. There are some friends that I know that, you know, I don't set the expectation too high. Because I just know them, not that they are, but I just know that with this kind of friend, this is the kind of friend that will check on you all the time, the kind of friend that, you know, might not check on you. Doesn't mean that they don't love you. Doesn't mean that they don't care. Anytime you meet or anytime you talk, you have a wonderful time together. But you may go for almost a year without contact and that's fine. There are people who expect all friends to be the same. All friends to check on you, all friends to do this. And if you don't do that, you become offended. I think you're just opening yourself to, um, up to, you know, hurt, unforgiveness and just open the door to the devil unnecessarily. So we need to be aware of all of these different avenues by which the devil gains access to people. Envy is another one. You know, someone is just being blessed and you just can't sleep. You know, and you find a competitive edge in you somehow to try and either, either negate what they have achieved or talk it down or try to do better. The devil will feed off something like that. Pride is another one. Now I want to take us to a, a, a story in the Bible that you would have all, um, read about. Have I deleted this unwittingly? Okay, this is it. So this is a story about David. The Bible says that at some point in his life, David decided to number the Israelites. So he might know how many people he had in his army. And unless you really understand the context, you know, right from the book of Numbers, etc., etc., you wouldn't understand why God got really upset with David for trying to number the people. But God always made it clear that Israel was his people. Israel was his army. He was very, very jealous of his people. And anybody that he put on, you know, put over the nation, he said, anybody that he set over the nation as a ruler was only there as a servant. Was he had only been, he had only received delegated authority or delegated power to rule on behalf of God. They were never to consider the nation to be their own. Now, when you start numbering, like the way a, 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 um, a sheep farmer decides to count his sheep at the end of the day. Why? Because in case some predators have, you know, taken it, he killed any of them. You number something that is yours. David wakes up one morning and says, and calls his army commander Job and says, go and number all the people from down all the way to Beersheba. Count them, that I may know the number of the people. Now, when he said that his army commander was not pleased and Job said to the king, now may the Lord your God add to the people a hundred times more than there are. And may the eyes of my lord, the king, see it. In other words, may God cause this army to increase in size a hundredfold and may it happen during your lifetime. That's basically what Job was saying. However, why does the lord, the king, why does my lord, the king, desire this thing? In other words, Job. And if you study the, the, the story very carefully, you discover Job wasn't, you know, the most pious or godly or knowledgeable in relation to the word of God, person around. But he knew there was something wrong with this request. Why would the king want to do that? So he protested. But you know what? The king's word prevailed against Job's. Job went and numbered the people. And as soon as he numbered the people, do you know what? God, the plague of the Lord, you know, um, descended upon the people. Now, if you read, if you just follow the cursor to the top of this passage, it says, again, the anger of the Lord was aroused against Israel and he moved David against them to say, go number Israel and Judah. That's, and that's to be found in 2 Samuel, chapter twenty-four, verse one. You wonder, God was angry with Israel and he moved David against them to say, go number Israel. Kind of difficult to understand. But when you go to First Chronicles, chapter twenty-one and you read verse one, it says, now Satan stood up against Israel and moved David to number Israel. So David said to Job and to the leaders of the people, go number Israel. This passage, I've heard, I've seen eighties make, you know, a big deal of this, that the Bible contradicts itself. How can God, how can one passage say God moved David to do the, one thing? And then another passage says, and then, and then another passage say, the Dave, I mean, the, the devil did it. The answer is very simple. If we, if we've, if you've been following what we've been, what we've been discussing so far about the way we open the door to the devil, this is exactly what, what had happened. What David did was a prideful act. And the Bible says pride goes before a fall. He opened the door to the devil. So in Old Testament, and remember that in the Old Testament, the people, they did not understand fully, one, the works of God, and two, the works of the devil. They didn't really understand the rule of the devil very well and they wrote it in the language, you know, how they, how best they understood it. It's how they, they described it. But even in their, how do I put it? You know, in their weakness, God still prevailed. The truth still prevailed in that someone wrote it in, in, in Samuel, another person wrote it in Chronicles. And when you bring the two together, you, you get a fuller picture. Pride in David's life opened the door. Clearly, the people also had sinned against God because the Bible says God was angry with Israel, means that the people had also sinned. But all of that combined to do what? To open the, the door to the devil. And what door did the devil use? The one that, you know, that led to pride. If David, if the people had sinned, but David remained humble, the devil could not have used this particular avenue. He might have tried a different one, but not this one. Pride made it possible. Pride is, the Bible says, God resists the proud, but gives grace to the humble. When, when you're proud, you're just, you are literally opening the door wider than maybe even when you're angry. Pride is repulsive to God. And how might we notice pride in our own lives? Because it is not far from any one of us. You know, inability to acknowledge that you are wrong, inability to, see, Joe protested, he said, what are you doing? I am your general. I know, look, I want things to be well, but I don't think what you're doing is right. David didn't listen. You know? Okay, let's move on. Envy and strife. Envy and strife. There's a passage in James, chapter three, verses thirteen to eighteen that explains this well. It says, who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show by good conduct that his works are done in the meekness of wisdom. But if you have bitter envy and self-seeking in your hearts, do not boast and lie against the truth. This wisdom does not descend from above, but it is earthly, sensual, demonic. For where envy and self-seeking exist, confusion and every evil thing are there. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. Now the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace. I don't know if you get the flavour here. James is comparing two types of wisdom. Or if you like, two different attitudes. You see, i- i- someone who, let's say, is trying to make a case, put forward an argument. Maybe he's even right. But the manner in which he's doing it doesn't remind you of the way Jesus would have put the same point across, shall we say. So James says, if this is how you are essentially putting forward your wisdom, he says, make sure that it's done in meekness. So you're, the wiser you are, the more meekness should come forth from you. You know, the more it is that people should see meekness. Always say meekness, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean low self-esteem. Oh, I think it's important to put that across. Jesus was not a wimp. Jesus was not somebody who tiptoed around people. If you go, eh, eh, if you read the, the Gospels, especially the Gospel of Matthew, there was a whole chapter dedicated, you know, going for the Pharisees. What do you Pharisees, hypocrites? He says they not tiptoed around them. Yet he was meek. I, I like a definition of meekness that I heard, you know, not that long ago. You know, the Bible says that the meek shall inherit, um, inherit the earth. And you think that meekness is referring to some, somebody that is like meek as a mouse. Now ask yourself, look around the world and see who, any meek people that you found. You know, if you, if we define meekness as somebody who lacks self-esteem, how many people without self-esteem have you seen that are actually reigning in this life? No, they are not. So it's not that kind of meekness. This person, he went and did a search, a word search. Studied the meaning of the word and discovered what meekness here actually means is this. Those that know how to draw the sword, but keep it sheet, you know, sword is kept in this sort of leather pouch called a sheet to protect it. Those that know how to wield a sword, but keep it sheet will inherit the earth. What does that mean? Self-control. You have the sword here. You can do damage with it. You're incredibly powerful. And if we bring it to this context, you're incredibly good with words. You're incredibly wise. But you have control over your words. You say what you have to say when you need to say it. You give reassuring words where reassurance is needed. You give comforting words where comfort is needed. But you do not fail to rebuke when a rebuke is needed. You don't fail to correct when a correction is needed. This balance is what the Bible is talking about. He says, when you swing out of this balance, He says, when you swing out of this balance and you just steamfall ahead because you've got a little bit of truth and you have to poke that truth in everybody's eyes. He says, this kind of wisdom is not from above. It's earthly, it's sensual, and then listen to this, it's demonic. There's so much that is demonic that we don't recognise to be demonic. And on the contrary, there's so much that isn't demonic that we call demonic. But the devil's best tricks, they don't come with horns. The devil, when he's pulled off his best trick, he doesn't come with horns. He looks like an angel with wings. So his best trick is to get you to think he's not there. In Second Timothy, he talks about the doctrine of demons. And over there, Paul enumerates such doctrines as don't eat this, don't touch this food, don't, eh, don't eat meat, don't marry. And Paul says doctrines of demons, and you would have thought, well, these things are no big deal. Well, that's exactly the point. Exactly the point. The devil will bring you something that seems so normal that you might even preach it to people to do. Now, just let me put in this caveat just for clarity, because not everybody, you know, some people will listen to this message that necessarily, I haven't necessarily been following the whole Bible study from the beginning. So let me, you know, explain that it is entirely up to you what you want to eat. You can decide to eat meat, you can decide to eat vegetables, you can decide entirely. Meat, there's no command as to God, so it's really not an issue. But when somebody starts to preach about food, what you should and should not eat, from a biblical perspective, he has stepped outside the New Testament doctrine. And he may have even swayed into the demonic teaching that no realising it. That's the point that I'm trying to make here. So James's emphasis is, he said, look, you can invite a demonic through the expression of wisdom. But it will not be the wisdom from above, because the wisdom that is from above, it's not just about, I've got something wise to say, it's also about the wisdom of how to say it. Who to say it to, when to say it. If you should even open your mouth at that particular time. That's all wisdom from above. That's what James is warning us about. So the take-home message from this particular slide, I would say, is remember that when we're talking about demonic works, you know, the works of the devil, it, it's not always some, there's not always involved possession or people shaking, people being thrown onto the floor, no. Remember, Satan himself, when he, he gets someone to, you know, when I, when Antichrist manifests himself, who I said will be, you know, Satan's representative. He's not going to come with horns. He's going to be a smooth operator. And just take that, just bear that in mind, that the slickest deception of the devil is never bizarre. It's the kind of deception that can enter the church, enter the pulpit, and people will say amen. Because it sounds so biblical until you start digging deeper. James is saying, don't even just look at the content of what someone is saying. Look at how it's being said. Look at the person's gentle nature or lack thereof. Look at the fruit that will stem from what the person says. All of this matters. Next thing, how we, next thing that can make us vulnerable to the devil's works, superstition. And here I've written a sort of a, a question and a math, a mathematical kind of a statement here. If knowledge equals light, then ignorance equals darkness and superstition equals shadows. You see, when a room is sufficiently lit and it's lit, now you've got light from different multiple angles, it can literally eliminate all shadows. A very well-lit room can, you know, and I say well-lit, I don't mean light just from the top. Li- light from different angles can actually eliminate all shadows. But when a room isn't sufficiently lit, what will you do? It will cast, there will be shadows. And that's what superstition is. Superstition is an attempt to explain something when you don't have enough knowledge to explain it. You have insufficient knowledge to explain something. That's when you become superstitious. And superstition simply means, because shadow simply means darkness. Not complete darkness, but a little bit of darkness, enough to give room for questions, doubts, opportunities for the devil to set in. So places where people really, you know, love superstition, love to eh eh, indulge in superstition. Well, the devil also has a free hand. You probably are familiar with this passage from ah, the Acts of the Apostles, Acts, chapter eight, verses nine to eleven. Says, there was a certain man called Simon, who previously practised sorcery in the city and astonished the people of Samaria, claiming that he was someone great, to whom they all gave heed, from the least to the greatest, saying, this man is the great power of God. And they heeded him because he had astonished them with his sorceries for a long time. Now, this was back then, two thousand years ago, in Samaria. But you could take this story and apply it to many parts of the world, especially in developing countries, especially places where we come from. Where you will often find some Malam or some Juju guy, et cetera, et cetera, who supposed to have incredible power. And the reason why people think this person has power is because they've seen s- something. Usually they'll tell you stories. They've seen something. It's not like it's based on total lack of knowledge completely. No, they've seen something, they witnessed something, but they never bothered to investigate and to discover whether this is actually what they thought it was. So they've jumped to the conclusion, conclusion, they, they've come to believe in something without having the evidence for it. And that's what's, that's what it is superstition, or that's what superstition is all about. And that just gives room to the devil. So the people of Samaria have been held captive by this man for a long time. He could come, he could make predictions, he could say, today it's gonna rain, tomorrow's, and the people would, would have to listen to whatever he said. Because, listen, they said, this man is the great power of God. You know? But ask yourself, or maybe this is an opportunity for you to sit back and ask yourself some questions. Is there anybody in your life that you have assigned too much power? Somebody that you have ascribed all sorts of incredible powers to? Believing that this person can do this or that. Is that someone who holds sway over your life? When that person speaks, you shake. When that person says, don't do this, that's where you, somebody says, don't marry that man. You're not going to marry that man, even though you think you, you're, everything points to the person being right. But that person said, don't marry him. So they hold sway over your life. They hold sway over your life. Remember, if someone else holds sway over your life in this way, it means that God is not in control of your life. It means God is not, he, he is not king, he's no ruler, he's not really lord over your life. If someone else can come and reverse a decision maybe that you made even before God, it means that God is not in charge. These are all, you're just giving opportunity. Remember that when someone rules over you like that, it's also means that there's a, there's a door. There's a door open wide. It's not just the, the devil can now use that person to thwart the work of God in your life. Satan thrives in darkness. You see, he relies on trickery. And therefore, his success depends on your ignorance. And he will go out of his way to keep you from the truth. The Bible says in Second Corinthians, chapter four, verses three to four, it says, and if, and, and even if our gospel is veiled, it is veiled to those who are perishing. In their case, the God of this world has blinded the minds of unbelievers to keep them from seeing the light of the gospel of the glory of Christ, who is the image of God. Then Paul also writes in Ephesians, chapter, chapter one, verse eighteen, I pray that your hearts will be flooded with light so that you can understand the confident hope he has given to those he called his holy people, who are his rich and glorious inheritance. He's praying that your heart will be flooded with light, you see? That same phrase, your heart being flooded with light, has been translated as the eyes of your understanding being open. Light is knowledge. Darkness is ignorance. When your heart is flooded with light, means your understanding is open. You can see things more clearly. The devil doesn't like that. The greatest power of a believer is knowledge. Knowing who you are in Christ is the most powerful thing. If you catch a revelation, and that applies to me, if we catch a revelation, a full revelation of who we are in Christ, many of the problems that we are facing right now will disappear instantly. Many of the problems we are facing because we don't know who we are. We know we are saved. We know we are going to heaven. But that's about it. But when we discover the depth of what Jesus has done for us, many of our problems will go away. The devil is battling for your mind. God also wants to dominate your thoughts. Because he influences you through your mind. The devil also influences you through your mind. God uses his word, the devil uses his lies. To reduce his, the devil's influence over your life, what do you do? You must renew your mind. You must fill yourself with the word of God. That is the weapon that you have. We'll talk more about weapon shortly. In his second letter, Peter writes, as his divine power has given to us all things that pertain to life and godliness through the knowledge of him who called us by glory and virtue, by which have been given to us exceedingly great and precious promises, that through these you may be partakers of the divine nature, having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. But also for this very reason, giving all diligence, add to your faith virtue, to virtue knowledge, to knowledge self-control, to self-control perseverance, to perseverance godliness, to godliness brotherly kindly, kindness, sorry. And to brotherly kindness, love, for if these things are yours and abound, you will neither be barren or fruitful in the knowledge of our Lord, Jesus Christ. You see, we have been studying the Bible for the past sixteen weeks. And, or, or less, maybe fifteen. And during the course of this time, the Lord has given us opportunity to come to know the truth as it pertains to different areas of our lives. Peter writes, if we don't want to be barren, if you want to be fruitful, there's something that we need to do. First of all, we must give diligence. Diligence, that willingness, that desire to see the word bear fruit in our lives. It must be there. This is number one. It says, add to your faith virtue, to your virtue knowledge. We can't emphasise enough the importance of knowledge. Knowledge is the difference between being free and being bound. As a matter of fact, Jesus's work of deliverance is in the past. Jesus is not setting people free today. He did it two thousand years ago. When you see someone set free today, all it is, is them coming to believe in the work that was done two thousand years ago. And if, and that work that was done two thousand years ago, taking effect now, that's what it is. So that, that's why I was saying that when we catch a revelation, you realise that you don't have to do battle with God, you don't have to beg God to do anything. He did it two thousand years ago. The battle is with yourself to believe. When you believe, the word starts to work in your life. I mean, look at it from perspective of salvation. A person is a sinner, he's still born again. The day he receives the revelation that he is a sinner and that he needs to submit his life to Christ, otherwise, you know, you end up in hell. And that person believes. You think it's, that's the time that God saves that person? No. It's happened already, two thousand years ago. That person merely appropriates what's been done already. When he believes, when the revelation hits him and he accepts the finished work of Christ that happened two thousand years ago, becomes activated in his life. This principle is important for everything that you want to see in your life. Deliverance from demons, deliverance from the fear of demons, deliverance from other types of fear. Any problem that you're dealing with. Don't think I'm going to go, is it, Christians go on fasting. And you know, I'm not against fasting, I think, you know, it's a very important tool and very useful. But I see fasting as something to help me develop, something to help me grow. I don't see fasting as something to help me get something from God. But that's how many Christians see fasting. Because they look in the Old Testament somewhere, the people wanted something and then they, then they fasted and prayed. But in the New Testament, it's been done already, two thousand years ago. So your fasting is not going to make Jesus die twice. He's not going to die again because you fasted. He's not going to do anything new that he hasn't done already. Your fasting is not going to achieve anything in terms of actual payment, your sins, for your healing, for your deliverance, your fasting is not going to achieve it. It's not like you're going to fast and then God say, okay, I didn't really want to heal this guy by all this, for this fasting, I'm going to, no, in the New Testament, that's not the deal. It's happened. Your fasting, if anything, will help you lift you up from unbelief. As you, it's not just the putting away of the food that's going to help you overcome unbelief. But as you set aside food and distractions, that's the key. It's not just that, once you're not eating, you become spiritual. You might decide to fast, turn on the television and watch all sorts of carnal stuff and actually be worse. And actually be worse off spiritually than before you started fasting. But if you're fasting, as a way of putting away distractions. So that you don't have, you're not taking breaks to go and eat. You're not taking breaks to, you know, because you are not eating also, you're not going to be using the toilet often. Where you are just focusing on the word of God and on prayer, meditation, really. Yes, that can help you to start seeing possibilities that you couldn't see before. And that will help you to appropriate something that Jesus did two thousand years ago. But don't see fasting as a way of getting something from God. They may have done it in the Old Testament. It's no longer applicable. In the New Testament, it's been done. What rather you should do is what Peter writes about. Diligence, add faith to virtue, knowledge, self-control, perseverance. These are the things that are going to make you fruitful. And that's where your focus should be. Let's learn some more truths about the believer. We've been transported into the kingdom of light. The next slide actually talks about salvation is essentially stepping into the light. The people who walk in darkness will see a great light. Those who live in the dark land, the light shine on them. Isaiah, chapter nine, verse two. This is what Isaiah saw. Isaiah, who prophesied. Hundreds of years before the Messiah. He saw that people sitting in darkness suddenly started seeing light, and he prophesied it. That's how salvation, your salvation and my salvation, that's how it was revealed to Isaiah. He saw it, oh my goodness, these people sitting in darkness. Have seen a great light. But you and I are supposed to be walking in that light, and sometimes we behave as if we're in darkness. Let's read Matthew, chapter four, verse sixteen. The people who were sitting in darkness saw a great light. Have you seen that Isaiah prophesied, and therefore was in the future, he said, will see a great light? But in Matthew, when Matthew was writing the commentary on salvation. He said, the people who were sitting in darkness saw a great light. And those who were sitting in the land and shadow of death, upon them a light. Dawned. That's you and me. We were sitting in darkness when a great light shone upon us. That great light is Jesus. And his salvation. And we accepted it. And by accepting it, we stepped into a new kingdom. We were translated from one kingdom of darkness into the kingdom of light. The devil doesn't like light. He dwells in the darkness, in the shadows. That's where he operates. And he, basically, that's what he wants you to do, drag you back into the shadows. Because that's where he operates. Your job, stay in the light. So let's read some Bible verses. He says. He has delivered us from the power of darkness and conveyed us into the kingdom of his son, of the son of his love. That's Colossians, chapter one, verse thirteen. First Peter, chapter two, verse nine, he says, but you are a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation. A people for God's own possession, so that you may proclaim the excellences of him who has called you out of darkness. Into his marvelous light. So another passage here, it says, I will deliver you from the Jewish people. Um, as well as from the Gentiles, to whom I now send you to open their eyes in order to turn them from the darkness. To light, and from the power of Satan to God, that they may receive forgiveness of sins. And then inheritance among those who are sanctified by faith in me. So this was, this is taken from Acts of the Apostles. The, Paul was describing his, um, his conversion and, and, and the things that, um. Jesus had said to him. He talked about turning people from darkness to light. So you and I. Were people that were sitting in darkness. And then we were taken, transported into the kingdom of light. And that's where we are. But we need to remind ourselves daily that we are in the kingdom of light. Because sometimes we forget and we start inviting the works of darkness into our lives. And that's when we make ourselves more noble. Now let's learn a little bit more about what Jesus has done for us. We'll read Colossians, chapter two, verses thirteen. To fifteen, and you being dead in your trespasses and the uncircumcision of your flesh. He has made alive together with him, having forgiven you all trespasses. Having wiped out the handwriting of requirements that was against us. Which was contrary to us, and he has taken it out of the way, having nailed it to the cross. Having disarmed principalities and powers, he made a public spectacle of them. Triomphing over them in it. This passage is talking about what Jesus has done for us. We all know about. You know, forgiving our sins. That one we know. But he says he's wiped out the handwriting of requirements. And this can be difficult to understand, especially when you're reading the King James Version. But really, what it's talking about is this. There was a list of requirements. That if you were a Jew, you had to adhere to. Was called the law. Now, if you're a Gentile, you didn't have the law. But there were certain elements of the law that your conscience approved of. And because your conscience approved of those elements, were subject to those laws. And these laws stood against you. Being contrary to you, because those laws were constantly about things that you want to do. That you can't do, you're not allowed to do. So then you live a life of condemnation, trying desperately to live a holy life. And failing. Which makes you feel condemned before God. And we know Satan loves condemnation. What the Bible says, Jesus took all the requirements and he nailed them on the cross. People misunderstand this sometimes, and they think believers are not under the law, we are free, we can do whatever we want. No. That, you see, the law of the Old Testament wasn't just a set of commandments, it was a set of commandments and punishments for those who broke them. In other words, you tried to live a godly life, but you only did it because there was something hanging over your head. So you were really not free. You lived in fear. Jesus took that away. So that your obedience to God's commandment should no longer be because of fear. Because of the threat of punishment. But because you love him, because you've come to understand what he's done for you. And you are full of gratitude, and you are obeying his commandments out of love. Not be fearful of what's going to happen if you, if you make a mistake and break one of them. That uncertainty of your, about your future, or rather certainty of punishment. Was taken away by Jesus. Nailed against the cross. And therefore, he disarmed the devil. He gave the devil no room. To accuse you. Now he may still accuse you if you don't know that this has happened. But if you understand this has happened, he has no basis. To accuse you. And another important thing to know about our position in Christ, and we're, we're rounding up now because of time. We have been placed far above principalities. Therefore, I also, after I heard of your faith, Paul is writing to Ephesians, and the reference is Ephesians, chapter one, verses fifteen to twenty-three. After I heard of your faith in the Lord Jesus and your love for all the saints, do not cease to give thanks for you. Making mention of you in my prayers, that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory. May give to you the spirit of wisdom and revelation, the knowledge of him. You see that concept coming again? Paul was praying that the, the believers' eyes would be flooded with light. Here, he says, the eyes of your understanding being enlightened. That you may know what is the hope of his calling. What are the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints? And what is the exceeding greatness of his power towards us who believe? According to the working of his mighty power, which he worked in Christ, when he raised him from the dead and seated him at his right hand in the heavenly places. Far above all principality and power and might and dominion and every name that is named. Not only in this age, but also in that which is to come. And he put all things under his feet and gave him to be heard over all things, the church, which is his body. The fullness of him who fills all in all. This passage is extremely important. For, and in understanding your position in Christ, your authority over the devil. Victory over demons. You see, Christ. Was always higher than the principalities and powers. Why? Because Christ is God. Now as God. Before he created the universe, he was far above principalities and powers. So why is it a big deal that the Bible, you know, that, that we should learn that God has made Christ far above principleism? What's the big, he was already high, far above the principalities and powers, high above the, ah, ah, above them. Here is the deal. Christ didn't die as Christ. He died as you and me. He took your place. He took my place, and he died as me. When he went and died, it was as though I died. When he rose from the dead, it was as if I rose from the dead. When he ascended into heaven. He didn't ascend on his own, he ascended as you and me. And when he was seated at the right hand of God, he was seated as you and me. Everything that happened to him happened to him for our sake. That's why him being above all principalities and powers is a big deal, because it means you and I. Are above all principalities and powers, because we are in him. See the wisdom of God? So when you see Christ, when you see salvation has been merely God forgiving your sins, it's like. Somebody who went to a buffet, a, 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 a big banquet with, you know, like a twelve course dinner. And you only picked up one or two cream crackers from the table. And ate it and left everything else. That's what it's like. You have been placed far above principalities and powers. When you are praying. For deliverance from oppression, the devil. That's where you need to see yourself, up there. He is down there. So you are not, it, it, this, it's a mismatch. You are not fighting your equal. You are in Christ. He is down there. The only reason why he seems so big is because you see yourself here. You see yourself down there, and you see him up there. No, it's the other way around. But you must believe. Christ died as you and me. He was raised as you and me. He ascended into heaven as you and me. And is seated at the right hand of God as you and me. Everything that happened to him, happened to him for our sake. And you are complete in Christ. Therefore, let no one cheat you through philosophy and empty deceit, according to the tradition of men. According to the basic principles of the world, and not according to Christ. For in him dwells all the fullness of the Godhead bodily. And you are complete in him, who is the head of all principality and power, where we're at here. So, next time when we meet, we'll be talking about how to put on the full armor of God. And engage in spiritual warfare. We'll talk about how to use authority, the authority has been given to you. Today, we've just focused on your position in Christ. But we will talk about how to use the tools, the weapons that God has given you. To wage warfare. So any contributions, any, any questions, anything that's stuck in your mind from. What we've discussed, what we've been discussing so far, please feel free to share, share with us. I also want to learn from you after, after, um, speaking for an hour and a half.
Um, hello.
Hello, hello. Good evening.
Yeah, yeah, we are enjoying this session and God richly bless you. Um, you were talking about, you know, how there are certain. Even certain teachings within the, the church, that you might not realize that, um. It, it, it is just from the pit of hell, and because like they can be subtle in a way. Uh, we, 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 we just respond to that, it, it respond to it as, um. The word of God, and of late on the internet, of some Christians have, um. You know, I, there, there are some two, um, preachers. I don't know whether you've heard of them, but two of them who are very popular on the internet. Recently, one put up a teaching. I just came across it, and he was talking about how he almost sounded like. He is a, I don't know the belief of the Hindus, like, you know, this is the religion, one of them totally, they believe that. Animals and things have, they also have a soul, so. For that reason, when you kill them and you eat, you are, like. It's not right to, that's why they are vegetarians. And this popular preacher on the internet. Was subtly trying to say it in a way that it's really necessary to kill eh, animals. Because eh, it's not, eh, eh, they are not being really healthy. So he was naming foods that were healthy. I just left that. I was like. I, 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 I could, I could see he wasn't speaking by the spirit of God. And, you know, I went to read some of the comment, people, people were not really alarmed by the teaching. They, they, eh, eh, they, they were, I mean, because in some what, eh. He has made himself an authority. People were just okay with the teachings, but. Oh, oh, eh, eh, we are even in the, in the New Testament, some of the things that in the Old Testament, he, he gave them rules to. It's when eh, eh, Peter saw that vision, the Lord eh, made it clear that this pastor was trying to. Even detect to members, what, what they should now eat. That, that was the level with which he was going. And I'm glad that you've opened our eyes to certain truths. That it's not everything that is being said on the public is true. There's another problem that I want you to address. In African church, I don't know whether it happens in the, eh, the east, but when in the African church. It seems every problem is two things. They'll tell you autors from your family background. Eh, eh, or, or maybe great grandparents, they, either they were coming from eh, eh, a lineage that. There, there was kinship, and because eh, you people became Christians. You are not probably eh, sacrificing to some of these authors, so these authors are speaking, are speaking against you. Number two, they talk, it seems that every African either, eh, if you have not been told. Maybe your spouse will be told that they have spiritual marriage. Thing really baffles me because, I mean, and, and they, they were screaming. It, it seems that almost every pastor believes that there is something called spiritual marriage. Maybe, uh, uh, I, I, maybe I need to be taught, because they, they'll tell you that it is responsible, it's, it's. it is responsible, eh, so it's responsible for not giving you a happy home or happy marriage. Eh, maybe in business, you may not succeed. This spiritual marriage can destroy almost every aspect of your life. Yet they'll be able to identify that marriage and won't be able to break it. Because of that, there are people who also believe that they have spiritual marriage. That is why things don't work for them in their lives. Reading the Bible, I have not come across that term in the Bible where we have seen Jesus casting out eh, sicknesses and then casting the spirit out. We've seen, we, we've seen different form of eh, deliverance, but I've not seen a deliverance where it was mentioned that the person is a spiritual marriage or a spiritual husband or a spiritual wife. I would, I would love it if you addressed this.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. I think it's very, um, it's very practical and very, very, you know, applicable to our context. So so Colossians chapter two is, it is a very, you know, good scripture to, you know, actually acquaint ourselves with because that's the passage that talks about all these sort of things, you see? Now, in those days, the Colossians were becoming exposed to a doctrine that essentially said, look, you may be a Christian, but there are certain things that you haven't done, that means that you are not wholesome, you are not complete. So in Colossians chapter two, he says that you are complete in him, who is the head of all principality. That's what Paul was addressing. Because people were saying, well, you haven't done this, you haven't done this, this, that, you don't know if you, now, because in those days, even though they were into idol worship and things like that, they weren't using the demonic, you know, the explanations as much as we perhaps do, say, in Africa. So if Paul was to write that same letter to the Colossians, if I was to write to Africans, I believe he would have addressed it differently. You see, Paul wrote about worship of angels in, in Colossians chapter two because that was the issue there. But here it's something else. So all of these doctrines about Mami water spirit, about spiritual marriage, what it is, it's about somebody intruding into things they do not understand. Colossians chapter two, their fleshly minds have been puff, puffed up and they are trying to intrude into something they don't understand. You remember the definition I gave about superstition? Superstition is simply shadows. It's a little bit of light, plenty darkness. That's what superstition is. And these people talking about Mami, they are trying to explain why somebody having a troubled marriage. They are trying to explain why somebody can't have children. They are trying to explain why somebody gets married and the marriage doesn't last. And then, you know, they get a divorce as, they are trying to explain things. And because there's so little light, plenty darkness. So what's happening? They're coming up with these sort of explanations. First of all, it's knowing the word of God. Secondly, even if there's a spiritual marriage, when I'm very sorry, when I go saved, I was transported from one kingdom into another. I am here. Whoever that spiritual wife or spiritual husband is, I left them in the darkness. I left them in the kingdom of darkness. I was transported into the kingdom of light. What's my issue? I don't even need deliverance. I don't need prayers. Let me tell you, the biggest deliverance that a Christian will experience is the day when he discovers that he doesn't need to pray over food. The day you discover that you don't even need to pray before you go to sleep. That's when your deliverance has happened. When I discovered these truths, you know, I used to pray before I used to go to sleep. I used to pray before eating. And by the way, there's nothing wrong with praying before you eat, praying over the food. But when you look at the biblical context of praying over food, it's like, it's to give thanks for the Lord's provision. It's not because you're afraid the food is poisoned or there could be something in it. Because Mark chapter sixteen tells, even though they drank something poisonous, it will not hurt them. So why, why, what is all this business of constantly praying over things? Are you the one that watches over your own soul or is it God? He's watching me. The Bible says, he give us sleep to his beloved. I'm going to sleep and let him watch over me. I drink what I need to drink. He takes care of me. If I listen to him, if I'm in tune with him, he will warn me about places not to go, about what not to eat. I will suddenly lose my appetite. It's not me that has to go by praying here, praying there, watch, be careful. That's giving the devil attention that he enjoys that. Mami water spirit, spiritual marriage. When the Bible says that your maker is your husband, spiritual marriage to whom? Can you be married to two people? You're already married to Christ. Who else are you going to marry to? These are just people who don't understand the word of God. They got tiny bit of light, plenty darkness and it, they're just wreaking havoc. Discover your identity in Christ. Your body is the temple of the Holy Spirit. He has already bought it. He's paid the lease in full. No one else has tenancy here. It belongs to him. Who else are you going to get married to? Doctrines of demons. Why are there doctrines of demons? Because the devil must first of all, so lies into people. So he can reap fear, so he can reap submission. He wants people to submit to him. And the way he does that is by feeding you lies. And then he reaps submission. Let me read a passage from first movie chapter four. He says, now the spirit expressly says, first movie chapter four verses one to five. The spirit expressly says that in the latter times some would depart from the faith, giving heed to deceiving spirits and doctrines of demons, speaking lies in hypocrisy, having their own conscience seared with a hot iron. It's forbidden to marry and commanded to abstain from foods which God created to be received with thanksgiving. Remember the thanksgiving I mentioned? Received with thanksgiving. You don't even need to, we see Paul said, if you go and they visit somebody and they serve you food, eat it without asking questions. Why? Because even if the food has been offered to demons, what are they, eh, eh, to, to idols? What are idols? There's only one Lord. Forbidden to marry, commanding to abstain from foods which God created to be received with thanksgiving by those who believe and know the truth, you see now? Those who know the truth and believe, they can eat anything. They can eat anything. Like I remember this man of God, you know, who, listening to him really blessed me. He said, when he goes, eh, when he got married, the people would say, hey, eh, Billy, we've heard that there's a conspiracy against you and this, don't sleep on your, eh, my bed tonight because the devil says, he said, because of what you said, that's where I'm going to sleep. Oh, don't visit that woman. This is the way they go, you go there, they give you food, don't eat it because, he said, in fact, whatever that woman has to cook that day, that's what I'm going to eat. Why? To prove a point that I have been translated from one kingdom into another out of reach of the devil. You must start to exercise this. You see, as long as this thing remains theory, as long as it remains Bible study material, you won't walk in victory. You will listen to sermon after sermon after you won't walk in victory. Start practicing it. They tell you, don't go there. He said, unless the Lord says, don't go. If the Lord hasn't told me, don't, don't go. I am going there to prove to you that I don't belong to this kingdom. I belong to another one. I have immunity, diplomatic immunity from heaven. I don't belong to your, your kingdom here. If the Lord sends me, I'm going there. They don't go where? We have been seated far above principalities and powers. That's not, don't do this, don't go there. I am going there just to show you that I don't belong to your kingdom. Start walking in confidence. Start putting the devil to fright. Let him know that there's a, a child of light here. The light shines in the darkness, but the darkness does not overcome it. Continuing, he says, for every creature of God is good and nothing is to be refused if it is received with thanksgiving. For it is sanctified by the word of God and prayer. This is the confidence that God wants us to live with. Not to go about tiptoeing anywhere around the devil because he loves that. He loves that. He know he's a, he knows he's a defeated foe. But as long as you don't know that, he will prey on that. And any preacher that stands in the pulpit and magnifies the devil is acting as an agent for the devil. Let me qualify this. I don't mean that he was never born again. I don't mean that, you know, he's not saved. I don't mean that he's not a true man of God. But if he opens his mouth and the things that he says, and that applies to me, if I start, if I start saying things that magnify the devil, I am working for the devil at that time. It doesn't mean that I'm a devil's agent, but at that particular time I have yielded myself to the devil. That's why there are doctrines of demons from pulpits. Some of them will be legitimate men of God, but without the understanding. And because they don't have the understanding, they will sow untruths into the children of God and put fear into them. If you were sit there, listen to a sermon and after you finish listening, you don't grow in confidence, instead you become filled with fear or questions arise, arise in your mind about the power of the devil. You have not been listening to the voice of God. You have been listening to the voice of the devil. Remember the things I said about wisdom in James chapter three? The wisdom of God is first peaceable. It is peaceable. It brings peace. It brings confidence, confidence in who you are. If you are listening to sermons that are constantly making you question yourself, question your, your authority, question your identity and keeps magnifying the devil, you haven't been listening to the voice of God. It's the devil you've been listening to. I hope this answers your question, Harry.
It certainly does. Thank you.
Good. Okay, time is fast spent. Any last question before we go, contribution?
Uh, good evening everyone.
Good evening, says good evening.
God bless you.
God bless you too.
I have some comments, yeah. Yeah, I think that, um, the church has not, um, hammered enough or taught enough on, you know, our position as children of God or I mean, like the confidence we should have as, you know, children of light, the right you are saying. Because if eh, the way you are teaching us or the knowledge we are having now, if we have had it before, I don't, I, I don't think that we have a lot of problems. You know, the victorious in our work with.
Yes.
But, but you know, the church, you know, I don't know, I don't know why they don't teach enough on this, you know? And you know, since we started this Bible study, you know, I've learned enough on that and I, I keep learning. So I know, and you, you know, you mentioned pride. You know, at times when you are proud, you might not even know. It's sometimes you say something like, when you are corrected or you are being corrected, you, you've refused to even listen and all those things. It starts to sometimes you don't even know that you are a proud person.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when you, when you sit down, when you sit down, anytime, even when you have to, you know, you've done something bad and you have to apologize and you feel so big, so, I mean, like, you feel like, ah, then maybe you are proud, but you might not even know. When, that, when, when somebody is talking about pride, you say, maybe I'm not proud. But you, you might not know. And then you say something about what we say, how to say it, when to say, you know, how to say it. And even, you know, the timing, you know, and all these things we, um, learning from. And I know that I have a lot of things in my mind that I want you to talk about. If I, if I put down my topic, eh, we'll not finish this Bible study.
But that's the purpose, you know, we don't just want to cover some artificial topics. We went into this whole demon things through the questions that, you know, we're asking. So please feel free, ah, it's not a problem. I do actually prefer it when we get questions because that makes it more relevant. So please, you can send me a long list of questions.
I am, you know, but eh, the time is passing, so I, I'll, I'll be dropping them one after the other.
No problem, no problem. God bless you too. God bless you too. When it comes to the question of this topic not being taught properly, well, it's because the church has taken the detail from the original, you know, um, work, the original commission that Jesus gave us. You know, Jesus gave us a, a commission which was go into the world and make disciples, teaching them everything that I've taught you, as simple as that. Jesus, in the middle of his ministry, he called his disciples, send them out in twos. Remember that that included Judas. Even Judas was sent with a partner to go and heal the, eh, the sick and raise the dead and cast our demons. Judas was sent out to go and do that kind of stuff. It was such a basic thing for Jesus that, you know, even Judas was sent to go and do it. These things were just normal. This was assignment he gave us. Go and teach them what I have taught you. But then we diverted into something else. And when we finished all these authorities, you know, the demon, the deliverance series, um, in one of the topics we're talking about is, is exactly how the church has deviated from its core assignment. And the result of this deviation is that we are stranded. There are many people saying, I want to know my calling. I want to know what God has called me to do. And they can't find it. Why will you find it? Because if the whole church has strayed, how can you find your calling when the church has strayed? You are in the church and the church has strayed. Of course, you are not going to find your calling. But if the church was going down the path that Jesus designed for it, of course, you would know your calling would be a bit, wouldn't be a, 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 a problem. You would know your calling. So the church has gone astray and the fact that it's not teaching about demon, eh, you know, delivering your confidence, your position, your identity as a child of God, your authority, et cetera. Well, that's just a consequence of departing from the original assignment, which was to train our believers. If the church had that's its goal, believers who are confident, the pastor will not sleep until he got this truth out to you. But the sad truth is that today in many churches, the pastor doesn't need you to be confident because if you are too confident, you might challenge him. You might question his authority. Well, you know, question is that you might ask questions that will make him feel threatened and he will feel like you are challenging his authority. So pastors don't need people to be confident anymore. The more subservient you are, the better. And when the people, I don't know this, I've, I've experienced, they will point you to some believer in the church and use that person as example for you. And when you go and examine that, that person is very subservient. He's a yes man or a yes woman. He said, they agree to everything the pastor says. They will put that person, they will set that person forth as an example for you to follow. What are they saying? They want to shut your mouth. They want to make you subservient. They want to make you like a slave. When God wants every one of his children to be as bold as a lion, people forget that Jesus was discipling Peter. And yet Peter had the boldness to tell Jesus that, no, you are not going to the cross. No, not on, not on your life. And Jesus said, get him behind me. He was being discipled, but he was not frightened of Jesus to the point of challenging him. Challenge the son of God. How many people can challenge, can, and I don't even say challenge in a rude way, but can ask a legitimate question to the pastor and not get a reprimand because we are not raising people who be bold. If you raise people that'll be bold, they will stand up to you. They will ask you questions. Okay. Okay, you taught us Ben, you taught us this thing to you four weeks ago. Now what you are saying today seems to contradict it. And then I'll have to start thinking, wait a minute, have I contradicted myself? The Lord help me here. Okay, you are right. Maybe I need to go and work this thing out because it's a little bit contradictory. You are right. That's how the church is supposed to be, checks and balances. It's not like one man show, you just do your thing and then you're always right. Nobody can ever be cor- correct you. I take, you know, I enjoy it when, you know, somebody calls my attention, like sometime we'll have a chat with we say Irene or something, then she will, you know, sometimes she'll be emboldened to the power, you know, with the authority of the Lord and he just say to me, I think you should do this, you should not be afraid to do this. I should say it. And I'm blessed by it and I'm blessed that God can use someone else to, to ask me questions, to, to, to challenge me basically into doing something that maybe I'm afraid of doing. It's supposed to be like that, we are a body, we strengthen each other. This is not a one man show. Anyway, time is fast spent, so I think I'll, I'll end here and, um, we'll meet next week, the usual time, eh, eh, we're going back to our Thursday meetings at, um, seven PM GMT. You all have a blessed weekend. See you next week.